I'm Emily Baumann, running to serve on City Council in Westland. As a business owner, wife, and mom, I have observed Westland with a different set of eyes over the past 12 years. One set of eyes was on the business view, another toward family activities, and the third on raising my children. One of the most wonderful aspects of Westland is how diverse this city is. Between culture, age, education, economy, and opportunity, Westland has the ability to be filled with thriving families and businesses. Often, we look at Livonia, Plymouth, and Dearborn as cities we want to be like. I have spent many years helping business owners create unique and thriving businesses once they have a shared vision and cohesive plan of their own. As a council member, I can and I will help create and take the needed action and do the work that allows all parts of Westland to be the thriving city I know it can be. Specifically, one of the first priorities I see is looking at the tax base in Westland. Compared to other thriving cities, Westland's tax rates are too high to attract and sustain business and families. We need to know why. Plus, a budget was just passed that will need more money to sustain it. So where is that going to come from? Do you just go back to the residents and ask them to pay more in the form of a millage or tax? Or do you find areas to adjust? At the same time, a thriving city needs families to want to move here and raise their families. I can and I will look for ways to lower taxes and attract both business and families. Everything else will extend from here. Being sure that every Westland resident is heard and their concerns are addressed means listening, seeking understanding of the issue, and acting upon the citizens' requests. I can and I will make myself available day or night to be sure issues in Westland are not neglected and we work together for shared goals. You can reach me at (734) 224-3679. I have spent my life building bridges and improving communication between people. It won't stop when I'm on council. Another area of concern is that Westland needs to attract more business to our city. Ask yourself why so many businesses have left Westland or only stayed a couple years? There are four things that must be in place to do this: economic performance achieved through thriving business and families, finding grants, flourishing community organizations, and organized art and culture events. I have worked with many area chambers of commerce - Livonia, Westland, Southfield, and Plymouth - and understand how to bring business to a community. I can and I will work to pave the way for all of Westland's current assets in business, community organizations, and cultural events to be even more successful. I will help to find grants and promote increased participation. This collaboration will work to draw people to Westland and make Westland attractive to new investment and business. My experience in life and business, both profit and nonprofit, in many geographies and industries, plus support of education at any age, allow me to confidently say I can and I will get the right things done with focus and compassion. Whether it is about the Westland Mall, parks, traffic lights, services for seniors or veterans, children or adults, and anything in between, I can and I will create a vision where this community brings in and supports families and businesses to thrive. One thing I want voters to know is that in preparing to serve you, as a resident, I have been an active participant in city council meetings and study sessions for the past three years. It was important to me that I could step into this role from day one. Voters who want Westland to thrive are voting for Emily Baumann. You can read more about me at emilybaumann.com, and you can reach me at (734) 224-3679 anytime, and my email is emily@emilybaumann.com. Feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Hello, I am Delano Hornbuckle, and I want to express my deep gratitude for the incredible opportunity to serve as your City Council member over the past eight months. It has been an absolute honor and privilege, and I can't thank you enough for your trust and support. You may already know that earlier this year I was appointed to Westland City Council with an impressive show of support from our fellow City Council members. It's truly an honor to have received such overwhelming support. I stand before you today and I ask you to allow me to continue serving as your council member for the next four years. In addition to my role on City Council, I am also a proud owner of an IT security consulting company that has been serving businesses right here in Westland for over eight years. Over the years, I've had the privilege of serving on various boards, including the Westland Library Board, Park &amp; Rec, MSB, Planning Commission, and now the Westland City Council. Being part of these various boards has allowed me to gain valuable insight, experience, and understanding of how our city works. Through these experiences, I had the privilege of learning about the genuine needs and challenges that our residents, local businesses, and community encounter on a daily basis. As a member of Westland City Council, I plan to continue working to keep Westland safe for you, your family, and the residents across the community, as safety is a top priority. I will continue working to ensure the men and women at our police, fire, and DPS department have the necessary training, tools, and personnel to properly respond to issues. Another top priority is our children's future. I am committed to strengthening our partnership with the schools that help shape the lives of our children in Westland. That includes Wayne Westland Schools, Livonia Schools, and our private schools within the community. I will also continue to collaborate with the city's park and rec team to ensure our parks are well-maintained because our children deserve a safe place to live, play, and learn. Let's never forget about our seniors and veterans, the remarkable men and women who not only shaped our country and community but continue to inspire us every day. We owe it to them to make sure we provide great services and programs that allow them to enjoy a worry-free life right here in the city of Westland. I believe that serving our community is one of the most important responsibilities we have as citizens, and I am excited about the opportunity to make a positive impact in the city of Westland. My mission remains crystal clear. I am dedicated to ensure that Westland continues to be a place where every resident can live, work, and play with the utmost love and respect. My goal is to create a community where everyone can thrive regardless of their background or circumstance, because together we can make a difference. On November 7th, I humbly require your support by casting your vote and picking Hornbuckle twice on your ballot. This will enable me to complete the current term and continue my commitment to making Westland a place we can all take pride in. Remember, it's Hornbuckle who has Westland's best interests at heart, so I urge you to vote for Hornbuckle on November 7th and join me in shaping a brighter future for our beloved community. Follow me on Facebook at Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. Thank you. Remember, vote once, pick twice. Hornbuckle for City Council.
My name is Mike McDermott, and for the past four years, it has been my distinct honor and privilege to be your public servant on our Westland City Council. When you first elected me to serve you four years ago, you gave me the opportunity to make a difference and do good for others in our community. I promise to bring bold new ideas to the table while working hard to improve your quality of life and solve the challenges facing our community. I believe that a good leader should take care of those in need of a little help and treat the people they meet with kindness, compassion, and respect. As your City Council member, even in years when I wasn't up for election, I have continued walking the streets of Westland, knocking on thousands of doors in neighborhoods across the city, having valuable conversations with residents in every area of our community. As a City Council, we've made significant investments in many different areas across Westland. I'm incredibly proud of all the new investments we've made in our parks and recreation services for residents. We've worked with our Downtown Development Authority, invested over $3 million in improvements to Tatten Park. Working together, we funded and built a brand-new ADA-accessible, all-inclusive Mission to Mars playscape and a brand-new dinosaur-themed splash pad for kids and families to enjoy. We also invested in brand-new pickleball courts at both Carrato and Curtis Woods Parks. I still believe that we can and should work to bring back a public swimming pool for residents. Working on your behalf on City Council, promoting a safe community while ensuring our system of justice is fair and equitable for all, has always been a top priority of mine. For far too long, we've needed to take action to address the staffing levels at both our fire and police departments. I'm pleased to see that we have finally begun the hard work of acting on this critical issue. As a council, we voted in favor of new contracts for both our Westland Fire Department and Police Department to ensure that we are competitive with neighboring communities and able to hire and retain the very best. Public safety should also mean preserving dignity, equity, and justice for all we serve. Public safety also has to focus on the public health of people as well. That's why we hired a social worker, substance use disorder specialist, and domestic violence advocate to address the issues of mental health care and help those in need. As a part of a plan to make Westland a healthier and happier community, I would like to see our city create a full-service public health department and hire a public health director to help residents in their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. In addition to revitalizing our public safety, one of the biggest challenges we face as a community is the issue of DTE and the unreliable state that they have left our power grid in. I have worked to hold DTE accountable when it comes to the constant power outages faced by residents here in Westland. I believe that it is time to replace DTE with a public power utility that is operated by we the people and accountable to us, not Wall Street shareholders like DTE is today. I've always understood the critical importance of protecting our environment, promoting green spaces, and fighting back against man-made climate change. Working with my colleagues on your City Council and the mayor, we listened to our residents and brought back both curbside recycling and leaf pickup programs to help promote a cleaner, more sustainable environment in our city. When I first ran for office in 2019, I promised that I would advocate for policies that promote greater accountability and transparency. That's why I worked with the mayor and council to bring back the previously vacant Board of Ethics. You know, I do my best to live by the words of the late President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who said that "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." Wherever you live across Westland, please know that I'm always here to serve you. My phone is always on, and you can call or text me anytime at (734) 890-2146. You can also follow me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, and read my full plans online at McDermottForMichigan.com. I'm your City Councilman Mike McDermott, and I look forward to earning your vote for Westland City Council in this year's election. Thank you.
My name is Edward Pruitt III, and I stand before you looking to earn your vote in this Westland City Council race. I am a husband, a father, a business owner, and a strong advocate for the community. I have 20-plus years of experience in a range of business sectors focused on change, leading the charge to create paths for businesses to grow, exceed goals, and achieve success. I've stood strongly on the side of each of our community members, addressing and executing upon solutions to see our community succeed. And because of my community-first focus, we have seen a lot of change, but there is so much more to accomplish. We are in the midst of a historic election, and this election brings forth the desires for hopes and dreams to be achieved and tangible results to be seen. I stepped into this race because the community has called for change. The community wants results that can be seen, that are sustainable, and cause this Westland to stand out as the example to live by. The community desires to see results that positively impact them at home with results that match and exceed what was initially presented to them. The community is tired of failed promises and failed expectations. The community wants more and better, and in this election, you can get it. The tough reality is this: We've gone through decades of disregard, decades of downward spirals, and decades of insider deals and political trickery. The community sees it and is saying, "Now is the time for change." Throughout my work as a community advocate, I have stood on these principles: truth, honesty, and integrity. Through my actions, I've demanded government transparency, accountability, and proactivity. I've demanded fiscal responsibility and community inclusion. We have seen some steps forward in the workings of the government, but we have also seen government officials dig their heels into the ground, especially when it comes to community inclusion and actions that would put their own personal and political agendas in jeopardy. Our community deserves a government that stands with them and focuses solely on what benefits each community member and not what benefits solely government officials. It's time our community gets true representation. This is what you'll get from me in office: You'll get a government that includes you in the process. Even before getting a seat, I have intentionally reached out to community members and brought their voices in. You'll get a government that can truly achieve a safe, clean, maintained, and respected Westland. I have achieved results such as getting unsafe road conditions in neighborhoods that have been intentionally delayed, resolved, reaching DTE to get power back on when current government officials couldn't, and so much more. You'll get a government that will be fiscally responsible, standing to ask the tough questions so that the checks and balances you expected to occur occur, and so that the results achieved are truly what benefits our city and you. You'll get a government that manages the finances well so that you see lower property taxes and more money back in your pocket. When our government officials continue to blindly sign off on financial expenditures and begin talks on raising taxes on our residents to fix their own failures to be the checks and balances, when our government officials, our current government officials, fail to build relationships with electric companies like DTE and Consumers Industries and the mall owners, our number one, two, and fourth highest-paying tax entities in Westland, when our government officials over-talk residents, throw up their hands at residents, and orchestrate pre-scripted opposition to good ideas so they can vote how they want, it's time for a change. These things affect each and every one of us and impact our daily lives. November 7th is the time to vote. Our choice is between the same and change. Do we want a government that truly represents themselves only, or us, as it's supposed to? Do we want a government that continues to violate the city charter, spend the tax dollars in a way that only benefits them and insiders, or do we want a government that lives up to and exceeds the expectations we have for them? Do we want a government that says one thing but does another, or one that truly stands on integrity and inclusion? On November 7th, we get our government back, and to do so, it requires us to vote for change. I hope to have earned your vote. I stand firmly for change. And if you need any assistance, have any questions, or just want to chat, feel free to call me at (734) 444-2741. You can also check out information all in one place at linktree/edwardpruittiii, also on my Facebook page, Edward Pruitt III for Westland City Council. Let's make change together.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to me today. It's an honor to stand before you as I seek reelection, not just for the position, but for the privilege of continuing to serve our community. In the next few minutes, I want to share with you what we've accomplished and why I'm asking for your support to carry our work forward. Over the past term, we have achieved some remarkable milestones, but our work is far from finished. Together, we have made our community stronger and more resilient, and I am committed to building on those successes. Our city is not just a place on a map, it's our home. It's where we raise our families, build our lives, and create our memories. As a resident myself, I understand the unique challenges and opportunities that our community faces. I want to work with you to make our city an even better place to live, work, and thrive. First and foremost, a community is built on a foundation of unity and inclusivity. I believe in the power of inclusivity. It's not just a buzzword, it's a principle that guides my approach to governance. Inclusivity means that every voice, regardless of background or beliefs, matters. It means involving the community in decisions that affect them, from budget allocations to policy changes. We need to create a platform for diverse perspectives and experiences to shape our community's future. Economic stability is a key pillar of our community. We have attracted new businesses, supported local entrepreneurship, and created job opportunities. My commitment to a thriving local economy has been unwavering, and I will work to attract new businesses, support local entrepreneurs, and create a climate that fosters innovation and job creation. A strong local economy benefits us all, and I will work to ensure that this prosperity is accessible to everyone. We still need recreation opportunities for all the residents. The prospect of having a recreation center at Marshall was exciting, but when the community aspect of that project became nearly nonexistent, I had no problem saying no. I am not going to invest $20 million, even if they are ARPA dollars, they're still your tax dollars, into a project that's just not the right fit. This spring, nine parks will be getting updated equipment, and that's a good start, but we need to continue to enhance recreation programming. I want to take a closer look at our ordinances and zoning. As we face the largest population that's aging, we need to be sure that we can accommodate their desire to age in place, and this might mean making it easier for families to reside together with things like ADUs or accessory dwelling units added to properties so that our seniors can live close to their families. We need to make it easier for multiple generations to reside together. Public safety is paramount. As we fought through the COVID-19 pandemic, I worked hand-in-hand with Mayor Wilde and Commissioner Anderson to secure vaccines for our vulnerable population. Now, regardless of your views on the vaccine, it was our responsibility to make sure they were available to our residents. I have supported our police force while also advocating for trust and accountability. I have advocated for proper manpower in our fire department to ensure our residents and their property remain safe. I am committed to maintaining a balance that ensures the safety and security of our community. In conclusion, my reelection campaign is not just about preserving the status quo, it's about building on our achievements and embracing the challenges that lie ahead. I am dedicated to serving you, to being your voice, and to making our community the best it can be. I humbly ask for your support, not just as a vote, but as a commitment to our shared vision. Together, we can build a community that we are even prouder to call home, a community that stands as a beacon of unity, progress, and opportunity. Thank you for your time, your trust, and your dedication to our community. Together, we can continue to make a difference.
Ladies and gentlemen, honored residents of Westland, I'm Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, a proud lifelong resident of our remarkable city, Westland. I humbly request for your vote in the upcoming November 7th election or via absentee ballot today. Westland is more than just a place I call home, it is a community that I am deeply devoted to serving. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the residents of Westland who placed their trust in me and granted me the privilege to work on their behalf while electing me to City Council in 2021. It has been an honor to serve you. Over the course of my tenure, I have made significant decisions that prioritize your public safety, stimulate economic development, attract new businesses, improve our neighborhoods, and so much more. This is guiding our city towards a strong financial position, which has always been one of my paramount objectives. In June, alongside my dedicated colleagues on City Council, we adopted a balanced three-year budget that preserves a rainy day fund of nearly $6.5 million. This fiscally responsible budget, without any proposed tax increases, allocates over $13 million for road improvements, close to $14 million for upgrades to our water and sewer infrastructure. It also ensures the continued employment of 13 firefighters through a federal safer grant, it secures a new roof for the 18th District Court, and includes additional payments to reduce the city's retiree healthcare liability. Ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents remains one of my highest priorities. I have committed to public safety by enhancing salary and benefits packages, investing in equipment and facilities, and attracting and retaining the most talented individuals within a highly competitive market. Furthermore, with the availability of the American Rescue Dollars, I am working diligently with my colleagues to support an establishment of a CERT team, a Citizens Emergency Response Team. This will help by ensuring that our residents receive the vital assistance they need during power outages, floods, and other emergencies that may arise in our community. Thanks to the unwavering support of the Westland City Council, Westland parks have witnessed remarkable enhancements this year. We proudly opened the Westland Rotary K-9 Corral, the city's first dog park, and welcomed new pickleball courts. J.C. Park now has a brand-new outdoor fitness court, and we have plans to upgrade an additional nine parks in 2024, including paved parking lots and modernized recreational amenities. I have been vocal in my pursuit of progress, such as reinstating the leaf pickup program and reopening the pond at Central City Park. I have collaborated closely with our city administration to confront the issue of commercial blight, which has hindered private investment. In fact, earlier this year, I personally advocated for the demolition of the long-vacant Naked Mills Tavern on Ann Arbor Trail. This property was torn down in March of 2023. I also organized a DTE town hall with our city administration and our Congresswoman, which attracted hundreds of residents and local media. As a city, we are continuing to hold DTE accountable. Our city has countless opportunities for future growth, but it requires experienced leadership to continue, innovate, and responsibly fund these improvements while keeping our taxes as low as possible. That is precisely why I'm requesting your vote for candidates who understand the crucial role of a council member. I humbly ask for one of your four votes. Once again, I'm Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. It would be an absolute honor to be re-elected to serve the residents of Westland. Should you have any matters you wish to discuss, please do not hesitate to contact me at (734) Additionally, you can visit my website at ivotmelissa.com. Again, that's ivotmelissa.com. I extend my sincere gratitude to each of you for your support, and I sincerely hope I can count on your vote on November 7th or absentee ballot today. God bless you and your family.